Okay, I'd like to call the order of a member of the board, a meeting of the Board of Selectmen. I guess I'm really excited tonight. It's September 16th, 2019. If we could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. So, first, we'd like to start by welcoming our new town manager, Melissa. Thank you so much for joining us at the table tonight and being here. Really excited for you to be here with us tonight. And it's your first day, and here you are, thrown into a selectmen's meeting. Don't worry, you know, there's a few items that you'll be addressing, but that's okay.
We hesitated a little bit, but not too long, whether or not to have the meeting. And then we were like, ah, she'll be fine.
Yeah, yeah, so thank you for being here tonight, and thank you for joining us here in North Annova. We hope you find it a very welcoming and interesting community to be a part of. So, thank you. Okay, we'll start with public comment, as we always do, or have been doing. So, anybody, public comment?
Jim LaFawn, 329 Osgood Street. So, I'm gonna start with a question again. Is there going to be, during the Stevens Estate portion of old business, is there gonna be time for people to comment on what's said then? Or should I make my comments before it's said?
We hadn't reserved any time for public comment afterwards. I guess we can, I mean, if you'd like to make them now, and then if we feel, you know, if you feel, if we feel there's enough time afterwards.
It's up to you, Dick, you're the chair.
Yeah, go ahead, make your comments.
Okay. So, I read, I did, you know, with the agenda, I was able to link to the draft for discussion. And I think, you know, things look good to me. I'm glad that there's finally a proposal before your board. And I do, you know, like aspects of it, but there are certain things that I'm concerned about, too. The first thing is, number one, I'm glad you did decide to go with two committees. I think that's a good idea, because there'll be some continuity with the committee that is already there to helping to manage the estate and work with the director at this time. One of the big concerns I have is your timetable. It basically says, insert date, which is for the Board of Selectmen finalized in the 2021 budget. I assume that's the budget we're gonna be voting on, on May 19th, which is only eight months away. Nobody's been appointed yet, so I guess my urging would be, as you know from being here at previous meetings, is to, you know, get on the stick and, you know, get some people on these committees, because you're probably gonna need a couple of months to chew up the proposal, once you get it back. And you're gonna need, what, a couple of months? I mean, it's been three months, we haven't appointed anybody. So, you know, again, please, let's get going, appoint some people, whoever they may be, and let's get rocking on this. Thank you.
I appreciate your comments, Jim. Anyone else, public comment?
Welcome, and hi. Ellen Mosier, 137 Cara Drive, and a trustee of Osgood Hill, the actual legal name. I have a question for the Board of Selectmen, and I'd like an answer tonight, because it's really upsetting, and it's been bothering me, and I've been told I should get it off my plate, stress-wise. I'd like to know who has directed, who has authorized, letters from legal counsel to me, my business attorney, without my knowledge, without my acknowledgement, and they are threatening and harassment content. I have called the State Ethics Commission of everything that is being questioned. I have done so much for the town, it's been in my heart for 25 years. The Ethics Commission has basically acknowledged I have taken the tutu-ral. I have no financial relationship with the town or the Stevens Estate. I refer, just like any other nonprofit or any other planner that lives in town. I do not, as a trustee, have any type of controversy. I don't do any of the scheduling, any of the contracting. That is with a client that says, can I take a tour with the Andover Townhouse, with Tewksbury Country Club, with Andover Country Club, whatever I see as a match, as a fit. I'd like to know who is directing this. If it's coming from you, I'd like to hear who is directing and who is authorizing. These letters have got to stop. I am feeling my own health, for my own health reasons. This is not good. This is not good at all. I was appointed by Dick and Chris during our interview. You were excited that I was bringing that line, that dimension of industry, getting the other committees and boards involved in the historical preservation, in the historical education, bringing people together where the director is the director of the estate, the only staff member, basically. We volunteer there. Dick and I had a conversation the other night. Your wife and I volunteer there for weeks before holidays. I don't find that a conflict. We love what we own in town, just like we volunteer at schools, or the senior center, or the youth center. I have no entanglements. I have said that for the last three meetings. It seems to me that I'm being targeted, and it was targeted during town meeting. I still have not received any financials that the trustees are due since town meeting vote the second time around in June. Those financials I need to look at. That is something that I studied during my seven months at home, recovering. My minutes are still not up on that website. They were taken down on May 6th and May 8th. Who, why, and why aren't they back up? I said that last month. There are certain things that aren't right, and it's being, it's, I don't like conspiracies, but there is something going on, that we're not allowed to have financials, see the minutes. Everyone has dropped all the minutes off since 1997 to my house. I have the bylaws. I have everything that was passed by the trustees of Osgood Hill, passed by the Board of Selectmen at the time. A decision was made, which legally we're looking at as well, to go with the policy statement as the warrant suggested in 97. But nothing was written up in September, as was requested by town meeting. But I have the original bylaws. It was questioned online by some people here. They don't have minutes, they don't have bylaws. We do, and I have piles and boxes of all copies. But more importantly, who has directed and who has authorized these harassment and threatening letters? I'd like to know. And I know you don't like to answer during this session, but it's important. It's got to stop.
I'll try to give you an answer, as much as I know. I'm not sure who directed, Les. I understand that the letters were, there were two letters, I believe, that were sent.
More than that, there's emails as well.
There's emails as well, okay. The letters that I'm aware of were two, and one of them, I believe, was just asking for you to go out and go to the ethics site and sign.
I've done all of that.
Okay, well, then, I think you just, if that's the case, then you just need to respond to that.
It's still going on, Dick. It's still going on.
But did you respond to them and let them know that you had done what they requested?
I told my attorney, I've done all the tutu-ral. I have the certificate of conflict of interest. I filled out, if I was appointed in September, it wasn't until December that someone, Chris, from IT, said, please fill out these forms. I have copies of the, everything that I have been requested has been filled out.
So, I guess the question is, did, was that forwarded back to the town attorney? That's all?
IT. They're supposed to know what they're doing. I was told, send it back to IT. All of it was done. The State Ethics Commission said, once you press click, they got in touch with my body of who I was reporting.
So, Dick, can we look into that to see if Chris received those documents?
My understanding is this mission goes back to the town clerk's office, but I will check.
And I verified that as well, when Joyce was here. Everything has been done correctly, and there has been no conflict.
Okay.
But the letters keep coming, and the emails that keep coming.
Two letters, one of them.
And to my attorney, my business attorney.
Okay.
Without me CC'd on.
So, obviously, there's, that needs to be, the loop needs to be closed there, that's all.
I fully agree, and I would like it stopped today.
We'll confirm that the town clerk has received that information tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. It previously was. Where it went today, like the minutes, I don't know. Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? All right, so let's move to the approval of the minutes from September 9th. Were you able to get the updated? Okay, so, yeah, in case anybody read them before this afternoon, I did ask Laurie to go back and update the minutes with the actual makeup of the committee that we had discussed last week. So, in the minutes, we're only a reflection that we talked about the recreational facility committee, but I asked her to update the minutes and memorialize the actual makeup that we talked about, which is.
Okay, so, I would, Mr. Chair, I would motion that we approve the minutes of September 9th, 2019, open session minutes, as amended by the chair. Does that make sense?
Seems to, I think.
Does anyone need to see it before we vote on it?
Yeah, if you want to take a quick minute and look at it. Yeah, so it was late, later this afternoon?
No, no, actually, I did look online, and I do have a printed copy here, but these are the old ones or the new ones? I didn't even.
That's probably the old ones, the, right at.
Well, I did look, I looked through online.
Well, why don't we just take a minute, and I can show you my copy here, online. Really, all I asked was that we, that it be modified to, and let me see if I can find that. Maybe the new minutes are not in there?
I believe it's at the bottom of page two.
Bottom of page two. Oh, yeah, okay, I see now. I was looking from the bulleted list, but, okay, that's good. So, it just reflects that we spoke last week about this committee, and we decided that it'd be one member from the school committee, one member from the athletic director's office, one member from the fields committee, one member from the DPW, the town manager's choice, and one member from the senior center, and two selected members from abutters.
I do remember that, yeah.
So, that's all, I just wanted to have that memorialized in the minutes.
Mr. Chair, I motion that we accept the minutes of September, where are we now? September 9th, 2019, and as amended, as you just read into the record.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye, opposed? Okay. Okay, let's see. Governmental reports, it doesn't look like we have anything under governmental reports. I don't see anybody here from licensing. At this point, we're gonna go back to licenses, but I am gonna, since we have a firefighter pass here, I'd like to take him next, so that we can move him along. So, we're gonna go down to consent item C. A request from Dan Pass to hold the annual Muscular Dystrophy Association fill the boot drive at the Rotary on September 28th, 2019, from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
Are we a little late for that? Isn't that, is that late, Rick?
It's a little bit past. In the past, we've.
It's all five.
We've been given dates in October, so I kinda pushed them to move it, 'cause we've been reined, not reined up, but reined on for the past couple of years, so. This'll be the fifth year that I've taken it, since I've taken it over, that I've run it. And we've raised over $14,000 in the past four years, so. And 100% of the proceeds go to Muscular Dystrophy Association. Just looking for you guys' approval to hold our event again.
Will you approve?
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Our thanks to you for the fifth consecutive year that you're putting this together. I know it takes a lot to get your brother offices out there and everything, and firefighters out there.
We do well, you know?
You do well, yeah. All right, well, thank you.
All right, thank you guys very much.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? You're all set, sir.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks. Okay, so we'll bounce back to licensing. I'll hear a motion to move into licensing.
Chair, I moved it, move into licensing.
Second. All in favor, sorry. Opposed? Okay, we're in licenses.
Okay, first item, our only item, has a request of Tricia Dumphy of Smolak Farms for three one-day wine and malt licenses for the fall festivals in the festival tent on October 5th, October 12th, from 10:00 to 5:00, and October 6th, from 10:00 to 7:00. So, we approved some similar requests last week for September, so now we're just looking at October. I think they have everything in order, as you see in your packet. Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Motion to move out of licensing?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
All right, sorry. I jumped in there a little early, sorry. All right, we're gonna go back to consent items, then, and first on the list is to waive permits for town projects. So, we had this last week, our last, yeah, actually, it was last week, our last meeting as well, to discuss this, and originally, we had it on the agenda, and then we had, there was a question raised of, you know, should we waive the permit fees for those, those projects that are coming out of a, out of a fund, and an enterprise fund? So, did we get some further clarification on this? Would you like to enlighten us?
So, I did some research, both internally and externally, into the issue, and spoke with both Jim and Lynn. And in Lynn's history, we have never asked for fees for any of the enterprise funds. And Jim, in his time here, also, there's never been the request for enterprise funds to pay for fees for capital projects. And in Jim's explanation, what he had said was that the improvements are being made on town-owned property, so the enterprise funds don't own the assets that are being improved. It's town property, so the town retains the benefit of the capital improvements. Also, he noted that the enterprise funds weigh the water and sewer, wave, I'm sorry, the water and sewer fees for town and school departments, which are much more substantial than what the town would get in permit fees. And I also checked with a couple of my other colleagues, who I would consider best practice communities, and they also do not collect fees from their enterprise funds.
All right, well, thanks for that update.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do I have a motion? For further discussion, anyway?
Mr. Chair, motion to waive all permit fees as presented in the agenda, for all the projects as presented in the agenda.
For the town projects, yeah.
I'll second.
Okay, any further discussion on this item?
I think we should stick with the best practice and not waive the fees.
I agree.
I mean, waive the fees.
Yeah.
Waive the fees, sorry.
Well, Dick, thank you for the research. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right. Next on the agenda is to accept a donation in the amount of $1,000 from C&amp;J Company LLC McDonald's to Youth and Recreation Services, was a very generous donation.
I would move approval and a letter of thanks.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, thank you to C&amp;J Company. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? No, okay. Okay, and then, we have, for an appointment for members of the advisory committee for the recreational complex. I kept this on here for discussion. I don't know if the, the sub, the sub-board, or the appointment subcommittee has had a chance to meet and make recommendations on this yet, since we just really talked about this last week. So, I left it on there for discussion, but how would we like to handle this?
I kinda walked away from last meeting feeling like we were gonna come back and confirm whether or not we felt the composition was sufficient. And I know that we, we basically ended at that point, but we didn't actually, unless I'm mistaken, we didn't motion and make, we didn't form the committee.
We didn't form a committee, right.
Right, we had a recommendation for the members, or the types of members on the committee, and then.
But we still have to formally vote to form it, and it's important to remember that was still only last Monday, and so, even if we had, we would not. We're good, we're not that good. And in fairness, I think that we should give, I can honestly say somebody did approach me at the farmer's market and say, like, hey, what's happening with that? But otherwise, I think that we would wanna put it out there broadly, to make sure that, you know, our colleagues on the school committee, now that we have our, I mean, in fairness, our town manager only just came today, so, who is it?
Yeah, we know, we need some time to get some members, or some folks that are interested in it, especially the abutters. We have to, you know, reach out to the abutters, and so, yeah, I would think this is a little premature on here at this point, but I think maybe we can at least talk about the makeup, the composition. So, we talked about that last week, and again, was in the minutes, but it was one member from the school committee, one member from the fields committee, one member from the DPW, I'm going out of memory here, one member from.
The senior center.
Senior center, and then two members from the, from the.
Abutters.
Abutters, and there was one I'm missing. What is it? Athletic Director's Office. So, is everybody, has everybody had a chance to chew on that a little bit, and get their, make the.
My only, and I throw this out there, I'm not, I'm not married one way or another, but in lieu of having the senior center get an appointee, we could say, in a butter, one of the, we could appoint three abutters, and just say, at least one of those three must be a retired individual or an individual that is a senior, so that way it just increases. It's still a seven-member committee, they don't make up the majority, but it also gives us flexibility, 'cause last week it had been expressed the desire of pulling not just folks who live behind, but also folks from Main Street as well. And so, not all abutters are gonna be impacted at all in the same way, so that, it just gives us flexibility if we wanted to try and recruit a broader swath of abutters from all sides of the property. And so, I'll throw that out there. I'm not, again, I'm not married, it's just something to consider.
You know, so it's a senior, it's a senior person, a senior individual, who is also an abutter, is what you're suggesting, right?
In lieu of giving the appointment to the senior center, we, one of our three resident appointments must be a senior citizen living within the X number of distance that we determine.
So, that makes three abutters on the, on that committee, with the two abutters, so that would make three. So, you're saying a senior, a senior with the stipulation that they are identified as an abutter?
I don't know if I'd like, I don't like, I'm not sure that I'm careful about classifying one person as being a senior. It's sort of like, oh, shall we have one person who's married without kids? I just, you know, I just don't like the way that feels.
So, are we saying that the senior center though?
I don't say, suggesting that you did anything.
I don't think that's.
It's just that I, I'm not big on picking one group, and, yeah, it's just not, doesn't seem like the right thing.
We don't wanna do the senior center then, at all?
Oh, no, we do with.
So, how do we identify that person then, as a member of the senior center?
But I don't think they should have the double duty. They must be an abutter and a senior. That's what I'm trying to say.
So, what you're looking at is.
Comments? One is, we would need to define what a senior is, 'cause there's a lot of different definitions of that.
Yeah, AARP, age 49.
But if we allow the senior center to assist us with, assist you with making that decision, it's likely gonna be someone that uses the senior center, and will be able to offer ideas on programming that would complement what the senior center is doing, versus just someone who happens to be, to Rosemary's definition, over 50, that lives in the neighborhood. Just to offer.
Right, because that person over 50 might not attend the senior center that often. And I think you've, I think you said it really well, as to why it should be.
And I think that was the original intent of that role, was that a person that is involved with the senior center, so when they, you know, with the programming and the activities that would be available at recreational complex, to make sure that it's in line with what is happening there.
The multi-generational complex, yeah.
Should, should we not also have a member of the Youth and Rec Services group? I mean, I guess that's what the fields committee is technically, a part of that, okay.
Yeah, but all these are vested parties that, you know, actively use the facility, and that, that's where I think the senior center, as well as the fields committee, sort of address that, because broadly, they represent the interests of those groups.
Right, plus you got somebody from the school committee and from the athletic director's office, so it's almost heavy on that side.
Yeah, I would say it might be a little bit heavy, so why weaken that other spot?
Yeah.
We do need to define a butter, so.
Yeah. Define, we're saying, not, not direct a butter.
Well, we originally, we had said one-eighth of a mile, but we can also go to the assessor's database and find out from the address who the actual abutters are. I mean, you can get a list of who those folks are, and.
The town manager was about to say something on that.
The ZBA standard is typically 300 feet, so it may make sense to have them generate a list based on that standard. It's a good rule of thumb. The only thing I would wanna just check with legal counsel is occasionally, abutters are not allowed to serve on advisory committees due to the financial interest, so I'm assuming that this committee would not be making any decisions, just be making a recommendation? Okay, so typically, that is fine. We may just wanna flush that out a little bit, before we finalize the committee.
Yeah, I think before anything, we should take the makeup of the proposed committee and throw that in front of legal counsel, make sure everything is in alignment, and there's nothing, there's no glaring red flags that we're missing, because we don't have that legal mind.
And I think just this discussion's kind of, there's still a few unanswered questions, so I think, I think you're right. We need to take a little bit of applause, and have people look at it, and see what seems to make sense. The thing with the abutters, though, we would have to define from what point? 300 from all of the property, which is pretty extensive, which seems to make sense to me.
From the property line?
Yeah.
Any property line?
Which is huge. So, it could be Main Street, could be 125. I mean, it's huge.
Yeah, and I think 300 feet, you know, I understand the ZBA standard, but I think that might be a little restrictive, because there might be other folks. You know, it's really, it's kind of a different standard, 'cause we're looking for people in the neighborhood that has an interest in serving on this board, on this committee, and have a, you know, want to be part of that whole discussion. So, it might be restrictive to go with just the immediate abutters, so we might have to, you know, loosen that standard a little bit, and go out a little further.
It was tedious on my iPad, but last week I had done the measurements, and so from the property edge, just even go out 400 feet, still didn't touch the properties on Mass Ave, for instance, that are right by where, right by Hemlock Street. And so, that portion of Mass Ave is still pretty close, so.
But the Hemlock Street, they're a big threat of abutters.
They are, but when you do, it's, so I wasn't really envisioning 100 feet as being as short as it is, and then the point was made by someone last week that, you know.
Like somebody I know, that's as big as your front yard?
Yes, so that's, so that's when I went on during our meeting and measured, and it's, those, I think you have to go like 480 feet to hit Mass Ave, from, from the edges of certain parts of that property.
So, why not have, you know, this is, this is an IT problem, or this is a, you know, information problem. Chris McClure could probably identify this for us, which is if we give him the parameters, he could probably, given the database we have for the town, he could probably incrementally draw, pull up a list and say, within this distance there, X number that distance, and maybe that's the way to do it, just do concentric around that, and say, you know, just, let's draw some arbitrary points, you know, whatever, 300, 500, 1,000, you know, give them three points like that, and say, come back to us and say, how many people fall into that, or how many? And then, we decide off of that. Yeah, just run, or assesses, or whatever, right.
My app software that Jean has access to, with the MVPc, that's.
And what if we don't get anybody within those radiuses that wanna be on that committee?
I'm sure we will.
I think we will.
All right, I'll take that. All right, I'll take you on your word for that.
I mean, and I guess, and I guess if we don't, then doesn't that almost answer the question about, about people not actually being concerned, which I think people are, and so, we will get that.
That's, that's an interesting, that's an interesting perspective.
But I certainly, the other, the majority of the committee is baked in, in the sense that there's going to be, you know, a school committee appointee. The athletic director has a professional interest in making sure there is a person sitting on that committee, the fields committee, and they saw it up until this point, I'm sure they'll appoint someone. So, I mean, our job really, our task as selectmen is just making sure that enough abutters are aware about it, and we get a good pool of people with, with the interest.
Can I just clarify a point that I was unclear on in our last discussion? Is this a, are we envisioning this being a short-term committee that exists for a finite period of time to set the governance structure for this piece of property? Or is it a committee that exists from now until the end of time?
We did talk about that at some point, but yeah.
That is a part of the ongoing governance itself of this property? Because those are two different things, I think.
Right, I saw it as a committee that would draft the procedures, the policies, the timeframes, the allowable's up there, and the process for how someone would request access or use of the facility, similar to how we do it with the comment, right? So, I don't know that I, I saw it as a committee that would continue on, but I think, you know, as part of the development of a committee like this, we need to set, just like we do, you know, just like we were talking about with the Stevens Estate, we need to set what are, what are those goals, the mission, and the.
That's what I was getting at, it was my next question, or my next request, I guess, was gonna be similar to what we put together for discussion for the Stevens Estate. I think it would be helpful if we could document something like that, the objective of the committee, what we expect specifically out of the committee, who's gonna, you know, the composition of the committee, like we've discussed now, quite at length, and so on.
What if, I'm just tossing this out, 'cause just, what if we extended it at least a year, because it might need tweaking? Unforeseen things could come up, and you would want them to, you don't wanna just say, thank you very much, we appreciate, and send them on their way, but it almost seems like you might even wanna give it at least a year afterwards, just to see, and again, I'm just tossing that out.
Does our special permit require it to be a standing committee? So, we, as part of the special permit.
Special permit was that part of it?
We were required to form this committee. I just don't remember if there was an expectation that this. I just don't remember if there was an expectation that this would be a permanent standing one, and my finger can't move that quickly to pull up that, that agreement, but I, I know it was part of the discussion and part of the agreement, I just don't remember if.
I don't remember.
It had to stay standing.
Can we verify that as well? Because, I mean, it might make sense that it has a short-term objective of defining the governance model, and then it, part of that governance model will include the recommended long-term objective of the committee, right? Because over the long term, maybe they only need to meet once a quarter to talk about whatever. I mean, it, it might be a different, you know, set of things that they need to do. I, I kind of agree that they would have a longer term, there's.
But not in, to, not forever.
No, maybe not forever, but, you know, there's, there's clearly a short-term task that needs to be done, clearly. It's unclear to me what, in the longer term, needs to be done. I think that will become more clear as we get the thing operational.
I think that becomes our job, in conjunction with this committee, to define what that timetable is, what that timeframe is, as well as the goals and objectives and the mission, you know? So, all of that, I think, we need to put together. This is, you know, our first crack at trying to form the committee or the membership, and then we have to now define, define what, what it is they're going to do, and for how long they're going to do it.
Would it be helpful if I took a look at the special permit and then maybe drafted a mission statement with composition and brought it to you for your next meeting to talk about?
Sure.
Okay, why don't we do that?
One thing that we did, when this, our discussion on this last week, was that the fields in general, the, the fields committee really does oversee and get involved in that, so there is a body that, that does that and has been very effective. If I recall, our discussion here was that this is much larger than that, and so, I think just having the fields committee, I think, my recollection was that that wasn't quite sufficient, so, just kind of informing your, your thought processes, we do have a body, but I think the general sense of the discussion was, it may need something more because of all the different things it does. It's not just for, it's not just fields, it's not just for the schools, it's a community recreation center.
And you know what, it's, it could be a great model moving forward as we take on different projects or change things up that we might find ourselves using it on other similar type things.
So, we can vote on the composition tonight, if everyone's ready for that, but we don't have all the parameters, as far as we can say abutters, but we don't have the definition of abutters.
I would like to see what the town manager comes up with with that.
Okay, but she wasn't going to look at the composition?
I think she did say composition.
Well, we were going to look at the, the butters.
Right, but we weren't changing the numbers on that, the number of butters. We had two abutters, but it was really, the definition of what an abutter is in this, in, for this particular implementation. Is it someone within the neighborhood, or is, are we going to stick with the strict three hundred foot rule?
I think I'd just like to see what, what the town manager presents, because she might bring, you know, fresh eyes to something.
I mean, I'm fine with that, we're not in any pressing hurry to get this done.
Right, I think, yeah, I think I'd like to see that, and then we can talk about it more, what seems to work and what doesn't.
So we'll take no vote tonight, we're just going to.
That's what I would recommend, but it's up to the.
Yeah, we're just going to leave this, unless anybody has anything they want to motion, but I'm, I'm assuming from this discussion, we're taking no vote on this tonight, we're going to let this sit.
If, if everybody's okay, just, you know, it's another two weeks, and it's another two weeks, so just, you know, it will be a month.
Yeah, let's not keep going, let's, let's try and vote next week.
Yeah, so the next, yeah, so I guess the same, so our mission would be next week, in the next meeting, have this, make our vote, and, and oh, by the way, kind of get the word out.
That's actually three weeks away, so that's plenty of time.
Plenty of time, so as soon as you have it put together, we can at least study it and then be ready, as you said, be ready to vote.
Okay, cool. All right. All right, moving on, so we need to vet, vote to set a date for the 2020 annual town meeting, which historically is the third Tuesday in May, which for 2020 is May nineteenth. So.
Move the Board of Selectmen hold the 2020 annual town meeting on Tuesday, May nineteenth, 2020.
Any discussion? Everybody's calendar clear for that? If not, clear it. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No graduation or anything like that, probably not.
It's Tuesday, right?
Yeah.
All right, so now we'll move to old business, recommendation from the subcommittee regarding the Stevens Estate boards. So, I'll hand it to members of the subcommittee, if you want to walk us through.
Shall we walk us through our document and chime in?
Okay, so Rosemary and I met a couple of times to discuss ideas related to the Stevens Estate Committee. We, maybe I'll walk through the entire thing and then entertain questions after, in case it's, you know, okay. So, we, we, I guess landed at the end of it on recommending two committees. One would be sort of the existing committee that, that we already have, saying that we would maintain that committee to provide advisory support to the estate director on the current operating model, because tomorrow and the next day and the next day, you know, we're still running a business up there, and we're not changing to some new recommended model, you know, for the foreseeable future. So, assuming we're going to just continue with this current operating model for some period of time, we need, we felt we needed some committee to provide advisory support to Joanna, because she's really a bit of an island. And just to clarify, we are saying that the day-to-day operations of the estate would continue to be overseen by the town, the Community and Economic Development Department, reporting to the town manager, obviously, and recognize the fact that there's vacancy there. I mean, Eric and then Megan provided direction, oversight to Joanna, that's missing now, so, immediate need there that we need to focus on. So that's sort of the one committee, and in the second committee, we talked about establishing a long-term advisory committee that would be tasked with advising us on a strategic direct, long-term direction for the estate. Specific to this long-term advisory committee, we said that their objective would be to review the current operating model, research alternative models, identify one or more viable potential future models, and make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen on the preferred model. So this long-term strategic operating model recommendation should obviously, I just recap the goals, preserve the historic home, preserve the surrounding land, protect the watershed, maintain public access to trails, and have capital and operating budget self-sustainability. At a minimum, the model that we would get back from this committee would include a vision of what we should be. So, right now, I think the vision, or to me, we're a wedding venue, that's what we are now. Maybe we're a rental facility or whatnot, but we'd, like, if you look at the Stevens Estate website page, it says a wedding venue, so that's how we present ourselves. Do we want to continue to be that, or do we want to be something more or less or different than that? What would the high-level operating model be for that vision? What are the key success factors, meaning, what do we have to do? Or what do we have to build or put in place in order to be successful with that vision? What funding requirements would be required, and what sources of funds would we need to tap into to enable that model, and just sort of a summary of the pros and cons of the model? And, I guess I said of each model, because they may have two that they like and bring forward and have pros and cons. To achieve that objective that I just went through, we were saying that we expected the committee to interview various stakeholders to gain an understanding of the current constraints and issues in the current model, solicit public input on the long-term vision, conduct surveys on the town's website, have meetings, what have you, and research other similar venues. Due dates, as Mr. LaFawn mentioned, this is an aggressive due date that we have, we, we put out there for the group's discussion, that we thought that this committee should present their recommendation to us prior to us finalizing next year's budget, because if there's going to be some funding required from some source, we would need to know that. But I recognize that's an aggressive thing to achieve, so, let me just finish, and then we can discuss. And then the life of this committee, we are suggesting this committee would be an ad hoc committee, meaning it would have completed its duties once the above objectives are met. So once they've made a recommendation, duties are done. And composition of the committee, we had a lot of discussion about the composition of this committee, and we thought firstly, the new Town Economic Development Director, because we're hoping someone will be hired in the nearer term, that would put a town employee in the seat, but not someone who has necessarily gotten entrenched in any particular opinion, because it's a new person, but would have access to all the town resources, and it would be good to have a town person on the committee. Three members appointed by town committees that have a vested interest, so the FinCom, the Historic Commission, and the Conservation Commission. And then three citizens appointed by the Board of Selectmen. And we had a lot of debate about how we would, how we'd arrive at those three people. What we kind of landed on is that applications would be submitted through the normal process. We all get copies of all applications that are submitted, so we can all review them. And then we were thinking we would all let D, no, or some appointed person, but we just picked D, who, who we would be okay with being on the committee.
This is where I'd like to jump in, because it was such a contentious vote at town meeting, but it did pass with a two-thirds majority. We really wanted to be an open and fair process and not look like where any side is stacking a board, either by accident or on purpose, but I would like to say by accident. So we really felt as though that us as a group would, would look through the names and pick people that we felt as though seemed to be going in with a, you know, I mean, there's going to be people coming in with opinions, of course, that's just life, but, so we thought we would try something a little bit different than just going through the appointment subcommittee, that we'd all like to weigh in in some fashion. So they go to D, we would say ones that we felt as though seemed acceptable, and then kind of get back with some sort of a, a listing of people who could potentially serve the town well.
So, I'm just a little, so are you the arbitrator, are you the rank order?
She doesn't really know this yet.
Or is this to be defined?
Right, well, to be discussed, I mean, we had, we had a lot of discussion.
In other words, you're in the mix, we just don't know how you're.
It was sort of, I guess we were thinking, there are people who, I guess each one of us would probably be like, that person should not be on the committee. There are other people who we would probably be like, this is a perfect person to be on the committee, whatever. And we were thinking that if we all just said, we'd be fine with these, let's say eight people apply, I'd be fine with any four of these people, these would be my four preferences, and each of us does the same.
See what the numbers prove.
See what it comes up with, like, kind of let, without us, because since we can't all discuss, then D at least can look at what we all said and say, okay, it looks like these are the three best people that you would all agree on, and throw them out there, and then I guess we can, I don't know. We welcome all of your advice, because we couldn't really.
I, I think you guys, I think you did a great job, especially with bringing two people who are really involved on either side and really coming to this, the only.
We actually worked quite well.
We did.
I, I'm not surprised.
Well, we know that.
Thank you.
My, my only thing to consider would be, on steps, on point seven, where we include the Town Economic Development Director as an actual member of the committee.
But not as a voting member, maybe more as an.
Yeah, because that might not be a town resident.
My, my, well, if they're coming, if they're coming to different visions, I mean, we, I don't, my only thought was that in lieu of having that person, whoever that person ends up being, sit on this committee, in lieu of them being the seventh actual member, having the Board of Selectmen have four appointees instead of three, so that we stick with the seven number, but I, again, we don't, we don't know who the next economic development director is.
Actually, we might have discussed that option.
Well, actually, I had also suggested that we take somebody from the CPA, because the amount of funds that have been used by CPA, they're there, they can see what could be a potential interest. We went back and forth a little bit on that as well. We might find that the town manager would prefer to have somebody other than the economic development person, and might want to consider somebody else as well. So this is all up for discussion.
Yeah, when, my feeling on the CPA, because I had agreed with that initially, and then I, I hesitated on that because, in theory, this committee may very well make a recommendation that's going to put a large proposal into the CPA for funding. And, I just didn't know if that would be like a bit of a conflict of interest, or should that committee just receive the, the request and analyze it on its merits and not kind of have a member of that board already have been a part of it, and I don't know, just wasn't sure.
This helps both of it, my, my gut reaction is both, and I'm fine with the, the three members appointed by town committees, and it's the Finance Committee, Historic Commission, and Conservation Commission. Both Historical Commission and Conservation Commission have appointees on the CPC, and so there should be that type of information sharing already happening. And also, precisely because the CPC is predominantly made up of people who have to be part of other committees already, we'd then be asking, in theory, somebody to be taken on a third, and I would argue a major committee, because I really would hope, I really would like this committee not to work recklessly quick, but I do want them to take their role seriously.
That reminded me of something that, we talked about it, it kind of got passed over, and I said, that could be the, the other person, somebody who is in some form or fashion in the industry, meaning they own restaurants, that they work at a hotel where they have these big venues, where they could bring in some institutional knowledge of what it takes to run a facility, such as that, if we can find such a person, again, it could be, you know, restaurants.
Or somebody in marketing, too.
Yeah, but that's, I mean, that's what, when we pick our three appointments, I feel like we should look for.
Those types of.
I, I think, you know, what is this committee here to do? We want them to do kind of the same mission that the OPEB committee did, which is to do the grunt work, the hard work behind it, do the research, have the intellectual capacity and curiosity to find, get the information together, put it in a way that's digestible, and provides us with really the reasons, reasoning and rationale behind it. So it's really about the capacity of the people, not necessarily just where they sit, because, again, there's, there's a range of people in each of these, these positions here.
It's true of anything, but it would be helpful if they had.
Yeah, e- exactly, I mean, so, I think that's part one, I think the other part of it is sort of to the, you know, your role is sort of like the judge when you, when you're selecting a jury, right? Which is, everybody gets one, one disqualification, right, and one pass.
That's how we select arbitrators.
Right, so.
Oh, is that the same fashion? It's really, it's really just numbers, that everyone agreed on, candidate one, and two, and then the, and then the other one might be a little, you know.
To rank order them, we rank order them, and off we go, so.
I mean, I want to reiterate that we both felt like we, we want this to be a very balanced committee, with a balance of views, we don't want anyone who's coming in with this hard agenda of a specific position. I think we both, in the conversation, discussed we would be open to a variety of things and discuss some of the variety of things we thought the, the committee could come back with, and we're, we're very open to those. So on the one hand, it's like, yes, it was a contentious town meeting, yes, there were two very different positions, but I think we all, I mean, hopefully everyone realizes in the public as well, we all just want to find the best solution, and we're open to whatever solution is going to work. I mean, basically, is going to.
But it doesn't mean that they can't come in with a position, everybody does.
No, sure.
But they have to be someone who's willing to hear the other side and work on, on both sides, because everybody has opinions, but then, you know, open-minded people, they can change their position in some fashion, or, you know what, I'm not crazy about this, but I think overall, it's a good, good idea. That's kind of the people we're looking for, who will bring, and some, in particular, who bring their expertise, whether it be in conservation, whether it be in historical, and the connection, I mean, Mass Historic is huge, a really important connection, and that's, North End of a Historical Commission is connected. So, I think we have to be realistic, there's, we're not going to, we almost don't want anybody who doesn't, comes in without any interest, because that's a.
Well, of course, I, I mean, I was.
Yeah, no, and I understand that.
I'm analyzing it's going to have an interest.
Exactly, yeah.
Of course, I, I think we're just saying we're looking for a balance.
Exactly.
So let me ask this question, so, with the, with the legacy committee, would we not want a member of that committee to kind of cross over to this committee, too, to kind of have that continuity?
I think that could be a very good idea, as well.
But, where that committee doesn't even have to form right now.
Well, that's, that's the job of.
Well, I mean, part of this is the vacancies.
But they can inform.
So I, maybe we should back into this, the timeline for this is really, really, I mean, I don't actually think it's even fair to say aggressive, I don't actually know how this timeline even works at all, because, in fairness to the residents, we talked about how, once we agree, let's assume we walk out here this evening agreeing, we then would give the public at least two weeks to be able to digest and submit their interest in being on this committee, or either of these committees. We then have to sit down, oh, no, then we then have to review, because we're not following the subcommittee process, we'd have to review all of the applicants, you'd have to score them. Again, that's if we do it all by our next meeting. Again, that's if we do it all by our next meeting. And I, we didn't adjust that schedule, so that's still.
Well, that was going to be a rec, a suggestion that I made, if folks were amenable to having the meeting on September 30th in two weeks. I know that's kind of just throwing it out there, but I was going to save that for the end, to see if, if we were, because I think a three-week gap is a long time, and we got, you know, some pressing dates here, and maybe adjust the rest of our meetings.
So aside, so that's, not, not to deviate, so that even still doesn't, then that means that meeting still is off limits to this, because we need to be able to give the public two weeks to even.
Consider the word to get out.
Yeah, I don't see how we could do this.
Can I just, what, what is the date that we would, what would be the insert date? Do we, do you know?
It's like March.
When the budget, like, the budget calendar?
We're on budget.
Yeah, thanks.
We were actually just working on the budget calendar.
But it's not just when we vote on the budget, it's.
It's before, I mean, we did, yeah.
But then we've got it through the Finance Committee.
So I mean, maybe it's not, maybe it's not feasible, maybe, I mean, long-term is long-term, maybe it's a, a following year.
So as part of.
Because I don't want to be rushed, I don't want to be, want to be rushed.
So, and I think that, that, and actually, that's a really good point, is even if somehow we squeezed it in, it still is rushed. So should we be tasking, should we be redefining what short-term means as being not just the remainder of 2019, but also 2020? So that falls under, and then, I mean, that puts on the Stevens, on the trustees, it puts a little bit of, they're under a time crunch where they have to recommend to us what certain things we need to do as a Board of Selectmen to make sure that 2020 is, is, we are not inhibiting the ability of that estate to be successful next year.
So, yeah, let me, let me mention on that, we had spent the majority of our time, I felt like, talking about this long-term advisory committee, and then kind of ended at, this is going to take a long time, this is going to look very, who knows what this is going to recommend. And we have Joanna trying to make, you know.
Make it all work.
Make it all work up there with not a full committee.
And not a full staff.
And not a, you know, and not a full staff, not, not a direct supervisor necessarily, I'm not sure who right now, Jean, I guess is her supervisor, anyway. So we kind of, at the end, we're like, we didn't spend a ton of time talking about changes or suggestions for the short-term committee, so I guess we can do that now through a discussion.
When you say short-term, you mean the existing?
The existing committee, sorry, the existing committee, which I said, I basically was.
But it's not short-term.
No, 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 I misspoke, sorry, misspoke. I meant the existing committee that is looking at the current operation, I guess, is what I was.
Fiscal year 20, the budget.
Was around February. It was given to you February 11th, and you voted on it February 25th, so we back up from the revenues, so it will probably be around that same time, but.
And even still, if that got presented to us, we still have to discuss it, I just think that it's not, yeah, that the calendar is what it is.
But let's not shoot it down before we.
No, we can try, but I think you have to be, have open-minded to the fact that it, it might not get wrapped up that way.
I understand, but I mean.
What's, I'm, I'm with you, Dick, I mean, you never know, I mean, you get this, the right group of people together, you, you don't know. And I think we can have an aspirational date of this, and maybe that's part of what the early report out from.
They didn't report to us in an interim.
Yeah, and right, so you may have an interim report that says, hey, you know, we're three-quarters the way down the field, we're at the, we're at the five-yard line, or man, we're not even close to midfield, we've, we've got a long way to go.
Well, they could, they could discuss, these are the things we all agree on, and now we got to iron off the others, no, I think that's a good point.
And maybe get interim feedback from us, too.
Yeah, yeah. I, I don't see, I don't, I don't, I, I think, let's get it on the road.
Yeah.
I think, I think we have to be realistic about.
They are asking to speak.
The, I think, I think we have to be realistic about the, what, defining what that interim is, I don't think the interim is the remainder of calendar year 2019, I think it's calendar year 2019 and 2020, I think that, that, it's important we look at that as the short-term, as opposed to.
Wait, but we're not, we're not calling it short-term, we're saying, existing committee is looking at current operations, until current operations no longer is the, the operation, right, until the long-term, maybe the long-term committee, let's say they come up, the long-term advisory committee comes up with a recommendation that we voted on, and we all, maybe we have to take to town meeting and get voted, whatever, and, and then that will have a date that we plan to try and implement it. The current committee will be still providing advisory services to Joanna until that date.
Fair point, and then so.
So it's not short-term, it's current.
For our long-term, though, shouldn't we, if we're appointing them, shouldn't we give them that date that they, like, let's say hypothetically, if we gave them the date that said, try to get it to us by the end of January, and then they just can't meet that.
Or a report, or, or a partial report, or.
Yeah, I mean, I mean.
An update.
Maybe one of us needs to meet with that committee to kick them off, kick off the, kick off the committee activity and say, here's our.
It could also be the two of us.
The two of us, right, and say, here's, you know, what we would like, but.
We just have to, like, I, I think that if I were on a committee like that, if I was on a committee like that, I would want to know, well, what's the timeline? I mean, our OPEB committee existed for two years, and I think that that was probably longer than, than we initially expected, but it's because that was the work that was presented, and, and you guys did your thorough work. This is one that, I don't know if it's more or less thorough, but I think that any committee we create will have to have that expectation, that timeline, because, I mean, even if we appoint this committee, this committee's being appointed in October, November kicks off the holiday season, and I just don't, we've all been on committees, I think that we should, I think we're, I really would love to be able to say that we'll have something in January, we've, we've all served on enough committees to know we're not going to have that.
But I just don't want to punt at this point, let's just see where we go. You know, it's a sports analogy.
Adjust, I get it, I get it, but I, I think that it's been, it's been three months anyways, I just get nervous about, we want to be, I think, the most accurate picture for this committee, and they're either going to have to work on an accelerated timeline to get us something, which may not be ideal by February, or at least if we come with them and say, come up with something by next September, they're able to actually put in their time and do a more thorough job of researching, maybe looking at seven facilities instead of three, that might be like, I'm, I'm just saying, I, I, I mean, and those also other facilities, they may require people going to actually tour them, which in and of itself means they're going to tour other government facilities, which I just, I'm, I'm, I, I want us to go into this with eyes wide open, as much as I really would love to see us open up, you know, calendar year 2020 with some ideas. I also think a committee has, these members, these seven people or six people have to come into this knowing what our expectations are, and I, I don't think that saying we hope that we have something by February is a fair expectation for any of them, and honestly, I don't think it reflects, it would end up reflecting well on us in the event we don't get something, because then I think you have a community that says, well, we thought we were getting something, and yet again.
And that would be bad.
Which I don't, which of course isn't the intention, that's why we're discussing this, and I, I guess I'm trying to look at it from every angle, because I think that there's clearly a lot of passion associated with this project.
And Mr. Chair, I would really, and I know you're the chair, and you make the fun, I would really love to hear from some people who wanted to comment on this.
Okay, but right now, we're in the midst of a discussion, so we can do that.
Well, it's just that.
I guess I, I look at this, you know, wait, you know, it's like we're, I don't understand what the, what the challenge is in launching this thing, and, and putting a target date and say, by this date, we'd like to have either a progress report or a recommendation. I, I mean, I, I, I don't see this as a big deal. I, I, I guess I'm, I, I think you bring up some really good concerns, Phil, but in the scheme of things, all we're trying to do here, all we're trying to do here tonight is say, let's get, let's get this thing, you know, on track, right? We, we know this is important to the community, we've got a strategy here that was laying out, which I think seems to make in collectively here sense to us, and we're starting to almost argue the destination of this, and I think that's where, you know, we can kind of get sidetracked. Let's get it launched, or start the process to get it launched, that may inform us on what the timeframe is. I mean, just because you, we've got a, you know, this date, doesn't mean we necessarily have to accept that to start with.
I would prefer to call it an update, and choose a date for an update.
Call it, yeah.
And that's, that's, as long as we're, they're not thinking, you have to join because we want something more than, I mean, I think we want regular updates from a board, but, like, I know I can't join and would not join committees if I thought I had to have something done within a window that I couldn't. I mean, I'll use, I'll use the rock the block.
But on the other hand, you don't want someone, for me, you also don't say, in two years, we want, I mean.
No, I, I, I understand, but, like, for me, I, I don't, I guess I would want to hear from folks in the audience then, too, because I have, this timeline was always accelerated, we expressed it several meetings ago in August, and that was when we were following a timeline that we, we already, in fairness, we already didn't meet, because there was continued, you got, you, you as the subcommittee continued to look at more information, and, I mean, I guess I would, I clearly wanted us to go a different way at town meeting, clearly there's a lot of people that feel passionate about this project, I just don't understand why we wouldn't want to be crystal clear and deliberate about where to go and where that, again, that destination is.
I get it, but I mean, that, I think an update in January, and potentially a recommendation. I mean, I don't want to just kick that to the curb and say no, and then have to wait an entire, another fiscal year before we actually get something, I mean, if, if they come back and they've got recommendations, and it's reasonable, and we can, you know, get it, but I don't, I don't want to just say, you know, not to do that at this point before we even give it a, a chance.
I'm, I'm still really comfortable with the phrase update, I don't know if I'm comfortable with recommendation, but update kind of says this, it says the whole thing.
Okay, a rec, a update with a possible, well, you don't have to hold them to a recommendation.
No, they can, if they want to recommend something, they can.
Hey, you know what, if you've got a, a home-run idea, let us know.
Well, that'll, that'll be part of the update.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, also, the recommendation may be something that doesn't have a big funding request, that has to have a lot of iterations in the budget, it might be something that doesn't require a bunch of whatever, it might be, keep the existing operating model and tweak it this one little way, whatever, I mean, it, it may not be something that, once some research is done, is that, I mean, we don't know, right? If it's, we don't know.
And does it have to be a big bang, too? Does it have to be everything? Maybe they can come back with a short-term recommendation that we can get into the budget, maybe there's a capital improvement that we could request of the, Steve, of the CPA to get into the 2021 budget, and then let that committee continue, maybe there's, you know, it doesn't have to be a big bang, it can be, you know, phased.
I'm thinking of the calendar, that's February 9th, but something before CPA is February 9th.
Right, I think, just my, my thought, we start, we start the budget in January, right? So by February, it's pretty well set up, so if we'd be looking for a funding source for something, and we're getting a recommendation in February, we'd be thinking about a separate article probably at town meeting, we would be unable to include it as part of the budget, and then we'd be thinking about what that source would be, and I would think, just based on the CPA calendar, as I understand it from my past municipalities, that's pretty well done, around January, they're already having their hearings. So, you know, I'm all for.
Some of them slid.
Some of them slid, all right. I mean, I'm all for trying to move the process along, I think it's very important, but I, I think, I agree that we need to be realistic. So I think it makes sense to have them come back with perhaps an update, and maybe they'll surprise us, maybe there'll be a recommendation, and you are all right, there may be a recommendation that doesn't require a large capital expenditure or operating expenditure, but perhaps we will have updates as we go along from whoever the Economic Development Director is, and they can keep us apprised to where this is going, and if we need to, we could amend the mission statement and amend the dates as we move along. I think that probably makes the most sense. I'm often uncomfortable with having a town employee as one of the voting members of a committee.
No, they shouldn't be.
It's an awkward position, so, you know, you may make more sense to have that person be the ex officio, right, the staff liaison, and then have a seventh member, maybe a member of the chamber, or who doesn't do business, or some other group that we, I'm not thinking of right now, but, you know.
I still think it would be good if we could get somebody that's somewhat in the industry, might be helpful. I just want to say this is something to consider, I've mentioned it to a few people, so when we first acquired this estate, it was an override, at a time when the budget was not good, and it won overwhelmingly. Since then, we've brought in the cell towers, and I always felt as though we should leave the cell tower money in the general budget because we were paying down the debt, but the debt has been paid off. And I'm really thinking that the committee should consider, and I asked Dee if she would look it up for me, and she didn't, I believe it was about $87,000 a year we get from cell tower, but I think there could be opportunities of making more. But I'm thinking, because that was part of the package of the entire, we acquired the entire property, that perhaps the committee should look at, perhaps that money should stay with the estate now that the debt has been.
That'd be an example of part of the operating model and funding sources, deliverable.
Right, exactly, but I just, I just wanted to kind of put that out there for all of us to think about, and we could probably argue all different things, but because it is part of the estate, it just seems that, well, now that the debt has been paid, that maybe we should be using some of that money to operate or do some repairs, so just tossing that out for people to think about.
Certainly something for that committee to reflect on, yeah. I had another question. So with the existing committee, so there was no recommendations on mission, so we, we need to, do we have that? I know Ellen had said that she has that in materials, do, do we have that? Do we know where the, you know, the, I know the original mission was to produce a report by September, was that it? Was that the only thing that was in their mission statement? Okay, so there was really no other goals, missions?
There is.
There really was not, nothing else that we know of?
Now, we were initially going after the information that was presented at town meeting in 1997, I believe.
I think it was 97.
Yeah.
September was 97.
Yeah, so it was laid out that it would be formed, and then reported back at the following town meeting, and that never happened.
Okay. All right, so are we good for now? So Ellen, I'm going to give you three minutes, if you want to speak.
I'll talk fast, thank you.
Okay.
I feel like I'm representing the trustees, and I don't want us to lose that line of succession, or whatever we call it, but as the trustees of Osgood Hill, which is the legal name, we have a direct correspondence with Joanna as director, although she reports to town, but as the many years of being profitable, we would sit, from those I've talked to, other chairs and other trustees, and when I did all last fall, which used to be online, every financial piece of paper, the bookings report, and then the new munis system, they don't exactly match, and I had questions, Megan, who, before she went to Wellesley, was seeing what we were asking, we went through that line by line, every meeting, and researched it before we had our meetings. We've gone back to putting out a schedule for two meetings a month, as they did back in the 2000s, for this reason, we had hands-on, I had Finance Committee, Historical Commission, I had everyone coming to the educational part of our meetings. So the committee that you're forming, are they coming to the trustees to say, we are a group that is going to come up with ideas, we'd like to talk to you as trustees, we then put together something together, and then present to the Board of Selectmen? That's what's been done in the past. So as trustees, one, if we need to say, let's move forward, you're, this committee's going to take time, we, we're never over-budgeting personnel, we need to get staff up there, we have 3,500 people or more coming in December to beat even last year's figures during holidays, we need to be prepared, we need to have staff up there, the events are every weekend, there's only so much one person can do, I don't like to, when I saw you the other night there, I did not want to interfere with the couple of hours she had off to get the vases I left. Every venue that I, as an event planner, there's someplace that things are left, other than having to go into an estate, I do not have keys, they were left outside the shed, it got windy, she put them in the shed, everything in the shed that is of value is under.
Vases, not keys.
Vases, vases, I don't have any keys.
She didn't leave keys outside the building.
No, 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 I don't have any keys whatsoever, but the vases, the vases, those, everything of value is under the tent, so when those were left for even the bride, that might have left her pillow, for her rings, things are left in that place.
You better wrap it up, because you're, you're over.
My role, so, one, we need to elect or appoint trustees, we have work to get done, we have work to prepare for, we have ideas that we've already put in place, we would love another group to have that discussion with us, but we have not got, and I don't know, nobody's on the government reports tonight, did you call the trustees? You didn't want to take the report I gave?
Right now, Ellen, we don't have a quorum for the trustees, so the trustees technically.
Well, there's three of us, so two would make, we're not voting on anything. I just passed in an update.
Okay, so we, we know that.
I don't, I don't know that I agree that that's not a quorum, we need to clarify.
Because I was told, three, you can have a vote of two.
Well, let's wait until she sits down, and then we'll discuss again.
Yeah, thank you, Ellen, thank you.
But basically, we need to move forward, so by stalling, since June, I have not got a call from the board of selectmen to talk about all of this.
There's been no stalling. We've been trying, we've been addressing this in every meeting.
The chairman indulged you, so I would let it go if I were you, Ellen.
But we want to move forward as well.
Thank you, Ellen, thank you.
So where does the committee come to the trustees?
Ellen, at my request.
As I'm walking away. But I would love to have that opportunity to show the work that was done.
I have a couple of things, just to address those points. First of all, I, I feel that the advisory committee that exists should not be doing line item reviews of financials. To me, an operate, it's not an operational oversight committee, in my mind. That is a town staff job. I am not going through the DPW, or the Youth and Rec Services, or any other committee. The Youth and Rec Services Committee is not going through Rick Gorman's detailed financials and questioning, please.
Ellen, please, you are of order.
Is not going through the detailed financials of Rick Gorman's department and commenting or making recommend, whatever, that's not happening. They're making strategic, you know, input and recommendations, Rick, you need to have more for the high school, Rick, why don't you try and use the space during the day when the kids aren't there, whatever. And then, he and his staff, go figure out how to do it. To me, that is what this current committee should be doing, advising Joanna on how she can fill the place and make, you know, and change the, the current profitability track of the, of the facility, get more bookings, do more marketing, you know, look at daytime events, why don't you try and get some business functions, whatever, some recommendations for improving the current model. But to me, it should not be done, and I actually had conversations with Kevin Willow, the prior chair of the committee, who said, he only got into looking at the detailed financials, line-by-line item of reports, because Eric was doing that, Eric left the town, and no one filled that position in that void, so he stepped up and did that job, not because it was the original mission of the committee, but because he stepped up because there was no oversight being provided by the town. That feedback was heard loud and clear from the committee, that the town was not providing adequate oversight. I am requesting tonight that the town needs to fix that, and provide oversight to Joanna, looking at the financials, monitoring those reports, whatever, we should talk about what in the town managers' report section of the commit, you know, the meeting, from now on, we should get some report, so that we have a view of the financials. I do not want to get into a back-and-forth that that committee says, the, we think the financials are this, when our town accountant, it's, it's not, I trust, Lynn Savage is our town financial person, she has won awards from the state for her exemplary budgeting and town management, you know, financial management. To question her record-keeping and knowledge of the financials is insulting, and, and I just can't fathom it. And it is not the job of a committee to be doing that to our town financial.
Ellen, please, you're out of order, this is not a public comment time, Ellen, please, you're out of order. I've never used a gavel, but I'm tempted.
I, so, my recommendation as, for the current committee, is we need to fill the seats, as we stated, there is not a quorum on that board, there's three seats, they should not be voting on anything or doing, you know, business with that not a full board. So I think we said that our subappointment committee...
That has to be priority, then.
Yes, our subappointment committee needs to...
We have people that have, have applied.
Interview those people, right, I know, I appreciate, I know people have applied, although they may not have known what we were going to do with this long-term committee, maybe that's more of an interest to some people who applied. So perhaps we can make the request, those of you who applied, I know Mr. Lefon applied, can come back and say whether his interest is in the current committee or the long-term committee, but the current committee, to me, needs to provide advisory oversight, that's why I'm repeating the word advisory, and not detailed operational.
Not operations, I agree with you on the operations. The only thing is, actually, financials and records are...
Public record, but should be posted and available by Lynn and her department.
I didn't really want to say that, but yeah.
Not produced by that committee.
No, that wouldn't, they could, they could do what they want, but it's not something that should be put into a record like, that would be on the town website.
The, the committee that existed prior was producing some set of financials that was different from what Lynn was producing. And then there was back-and-forth, there was confusion created in the public, there was all sorts of confusion and discussion about why the numbers were different and so on. Lynn Savage should be responsible for providing this board with the financial...
Agreed, agreed.
View.
Okay.
And I think that's a good point, it's why, it's why we waited, and I think that we were pretty deliberate for a number of meetings explaining that it didn't make sense to be appointing people without being clear about what our expectations were, whether it was for, because if, for instance, you came into this evening, I should say, we, we left a meeting, two meetings ago, thinking that there may be a single committee, and we came this evening realizing, or I guess, presented with, that there would be two. I think that that was helpful, I think that, again, it's been slow but deliberate. So I appreciate that. I appreciate the thought, specifically that both Slack McKeen and Slack McSpedee will be put into this.
Thank you.
May I just offer? So, the comment was made four times, that some staff intentionally have removed minutes from the website, so I would ask that Ms. Moser provide to me the dates of those minutes, so we can look into that, because that's a very serious accusation to make.
Can you say, it's time to stay on your website?
Okay. Thank you.
But we don't produce any of the financials.
Okay, Ms. Moser, enough, anyway, thank you. You're out of order, you, you answered the que...
Ellen, Ellen.
Ms. Moser, I've asked you many times that you're out of order, and if I ask you again, I'm going to ask you to leave. Okay, the next time, you, I'll be asking you to leave.
And if, if you would like to provide those minutes, we will make sure that they are posted, if they are not.
They're on the page.
Okay.
Then they're there.
Then they're on, then they're online.
They're there. If they're, what do you mean by they're on the page? If they're on laser fuse, they're there.
You know what, why don't you guys figure this, work this out?
Let's, let's look into it. And I'm assuming, then, the mission and the other documents would be available on there as well. So let's, let's look and see if we can find them.
Okay.
So, would the next step be to vote? It's not, it's on the agenda that it's there.
Right, so, absolutely, so, I think the next step, so, so everyone, you know, had a chance to review this. We've seen, there's a makeup of the committee, we are on a short fuse here, we want to get this thing started, so I think the first thing we could do, is my recommendation, would be to vote on the composition of the committee, and then start advertising or looking for folks to fill those, those roles.
Okay, I think that the board of selectmen form a long-term advisory committee for the Stevens estate, comprised of three members appointed by town committees, FinCom, Historical Commission, and Conservation Commission, and four citizens appointed by the board of selectmen, with the new town economic development director serving an ex-fisio capacity.
Second motion, we have a second, any further discussion?
I'll second.
Okay, so Chris seconded, but you can second it as well.
I'll second it, okay.
Okay.
That was...
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. And then I think we also have a next step, is to start filling the current board with membership, so we can get back to a quorum for that.
Right, so we've got, I believe, four candidates.
But some might, some might...
So, so, so we're going to reach out to the floor that...
They might, yeah, they might opt to maybe try to get on the other ones.
And we'll re, and we'll relaunch it along with the news of this.
Can I, can I, in fairness, if we didn't really advertise, I think that we can put that advertisement out, at least for the short, the advisory one, not the long-term one, but the, the standing one, we can at least put that out and get that squared away sooner rather than later, and see if there's any other people interested now, especially that we've, we've kind of hammered out what the scope and expectation is for these folks.
Good. Okay. So, anything else, under, any, well, we're going to move to the town managers' reports. We have no new business, we go, we move to the town managers' reports. We have a job posting any update on the economic and community development director, because that would be, I know it's your first day.
It's okay, I've been here 13 hours. All the problems are solved. We're interviewing right now, I believe there's a couple of recommendations that are coming forward, and I'll be doing some final interviews in the next couple of weeks, hopefully next week.
Get it done.
Get it done. And we have treasure collector posted, and I believe the town clerk position is about to be posted, so.
Okay, and then, we also have the opioid report that's been posted, if people have a chance to look through that. I think I'd like to maybe ask Firefighter Duchesne to come in some night and maybe present this report, because I think it's important information, yeah, and I think would be, yeah, and, yeah, it would be great to have someone come in and talk about this information in this report, because it's, you know, obviously, it's, it's very alarming, but the trend, believe it or not, seems to be down. If we look at the report, in 2016, was our heaviest year for overdoses, and there were 34, and in the last two years, it's gone down, 27 to 23, still not good, but it is trending in the right direction.
I wonder, it has to do with the taking stronger controls coming right out of the doctors' offices and pharmacies, and what you have to go through to, in order to get medication if you're having major surgery. I wonder if, which, that's where it should have, that's where they say it started, so maybe that's starting to have an impact.
Yeah, so I'd like to have Firefighter Duchesne come in and maybe talk to us about why he feels it's, it's trending down, and what, what steps have been done, and what, what further steps we can do. And also, our, our new mental health director as well, maybe we can have her come in and talk to us, too. I think, you know, it's an important report, that we, we should take some action on, and at least have it highlighted to us, so, okay. So maybe we can take that, Laurie, as an action item, to ask Firefighter Duchesne to come in and talk, next meeting, or maybe two meetings, talk about the opioid report to us, with us.
And it would be a nice update to show, Firefighter Duchesne provides the data, but then what Deanna does with that information in case of management.
Right, so maybe we'll have them both come in, yeah, I think that's great. And then the IT report is also out there, and that's an interesting one, that tells us how many requests we've had through Report It, which is a great tool that we have, and I, I use it quite a bit to report issues around town, and it's interesting to see, you know, the number of reports that we get in, and, and how they're resolved, so, you know, maybe I advise you to take a, yeah, it really has. I actually was walking one day, and there was a tree on Pleasant Street that was creaking really badly, near your house, Jim, on Pleasant Street. And it, it was creaking, like it was cracking, and I, I put the report in on a Sunday, and I took a picture of it, and I got a response that same day, and the next day, they had the electric company out there, and they took the limbs down that were, were breaking.
Well, they're really good, but they are across the street from the tree, the DPW, that's up to...
Oh, no, this was on, this was on Pleasant Street, diagonally across from your house.
Took that down the same night.
Oh, they did, yeah. Did you walk by and hear it cracking?
Well, we had been reporting it for three months, and nothing was done.
You know, it was all going, and then, you know.
All the selectors. You don't wonder why they talk on Sunday night.
Oh, wow. Oh, God.
There you go.
Well, at least we got it down.
Good job.
Okay. So anyway, another interesting report that talks about that, and, and, you know, maybe we should look into that, why, I thought there was a, a response time required for every item. Did you use the Report It app to do that? Did you use the Report It, okay. So sometimes with the Report It app, they, they have to resolve the issues. It's a record, they have to resolve the issue, so...
Or is it even where?
Oh, it's on the town website, it's called Report It, and you just go in and you put down, you select a category, and you put in the issue, and boom. Yeah. Okay, anything else? So selectmen's updates and comments. Anybody have anything?
Well, we have the Fall Festival.
Next Saturday.
I've been really busy lately.
It's a, it's a good and busy week.
Yeah, yeah, a lot of good stuff.
Next Saturday.
And the St. Michael's picnic is, well, not Saturday, the next week.
The next Sunday.
Thank you, and, whatever, it was like, 4th, I believe? Yeah.
And we have a meet and greet with our new town manager coming up as well, what's the date of that?
7th.
7th, before the next meeting.
Okay, and that's a public meet and greet, that's for everyone, anybody that wants to come in.
Have we decided on a location?
Here.
In this room?
I was kind of hoping for the Stevens Street.
Well, it's right, it's prior to our currently scheduled next meeting.
I see, makes sense, okay.
So, yeah. Okay, any other comments or updates? How about any comments or updates from our new town manager, anything you want to...
Just thank you for having me, it's been wonderful meeting everyone today, very busy day, but very fruitful, so thank you.
Okay, great. All right, so our next meeting is October 7th, and I'll open it up to the board, do we see a reason, do we want to pull that into the 30th, if people are available? Do you think that'll be enough time to get a committee, this, the, the new committee seated, or, or at least candidates in there, or should we wait and keep the meeting on schedule for October 7th?
We may have other business we need to tackle on September 30th, but I think if it's in the context of Justice Committee, I would say October 7th is probably the more practical pace.
We really got to get that message out there.
So we get a, one week to get the message out there, we get a couple of weeks to get people in and interviewed, so why don't we keep the meeting on October 7th as scheduled, and that way we don't mess up the rest of the year.
Are we doing interviews for the long-term committee?
Oh, so, yeah, people are, are you guys interviewing the, the long-term, you're not interviewing, right? They're just gonna, but the others you are, so.
Yes, the, the votes, that, that we could more, more quickly.
Yeah, 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 well, yeah, we didn't really talk, I guess they will be just, I guess we were assuming we would know the people.
Well, because we're back on this topic, I did want to, do you want to do the, the long-term plan committee first, because people might prefer to be on that, but if, for whatever reason they don't make it, they might want to submit their name to be on the board.